Call this meeting to order. Can a roll call please?
Brian Card?
Here.
Ed Maloran?
Here.
John Seren Topolus?
Here.
Matthew Wendor?
Absent with notification.
Michael Huco?
Here.
And Keith Thurlo?
Here. Seating of alternates, uh, oh. Citizens comments on items. Any addendums for this?
There's no addendums at this time. We do have some, um, at least two citizen comments. Um, and I don't, I believe Mr. Goslin is here. And I do not know if Jody Clun is here. So if they want to both read their comments into the record, but I believe, let me see. Mr. Goslin's is in regards to something that's under a public hearing, so he can do the public hearing. But Judy's is more of a general, so it may be public comment now. So if she wants to come up and read it, do you have a copy of it with you, Judy? If not, I have a copy here. Would it be easier to read from my?
That's the whole over here missing is on the back.
Thank you. Hi, Jody Clun, 20 Colonial Drive in Daville. Um, so the comments I had sent in was, one of the biggest reasons, or one of the big reasons that people moved to Killingley is for the small town feel. It's certainly among the foremost reasons that I moved here, and my neighbors and friends cite it as amongst their major drivers as well. But allowing the density to increase is destroying that feeling. Killingley is gradually becoming just another town and it's losing its allure. While I understand the need to bring in revenue and provide housing, these should be done in a way that preserves the rural nature of the town, which the residents have repeatedly expressed that they want to keep. It seems like the zoning committee is disregarding the preferences of Killingley residents in order to appease builders, which is shameful. Please listen to what people are saying they want before people start leaving the area over this. If we keep going the way we are, we're going to look back on this in the future and be deeply regretful. So, and I would just like to add to that, like, I truly do understand that there are ways in which we need to build up the community. We have to, you know, make things interesting for people to come here, and I get that. But I really do feel like that's overshadowing, um, what a lot of people are saying that they want. And I, while I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing any of this, I think there's a better way to find a balance. And I'm just asking for the zoning commission to keep an open mind and listen to people, what people are asking for, um, and just try to strike that balance rather than going, you know, too far to the other side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Just name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Roger Goslin. I live at 347 Hartford Pike, directly across the street from 350. And I mean directly across the street from 350.
Excuse me for a minute. That's going to be a public hearing tonight?
Yep.
All right, so you don't want to, this is for stuff that's not already on the agenda? So you can wait a few minutes and you can speak during that public hearing?
Okay.
That'll pertain to that directly rather than? This is for general stuff that's not on the public hearing, okay?
Uh, Ed Grandowski, Upper Maple Street. I spoke last month, uh, about, we have private ways, not town roads. I think you should add to your regulations that when you do a subdivision, there should be a sign up until such time that the town council approves the road to say, "Private way, not a town road." I talked to Mary the other day, and yeah, Matt's gonna put up some signs. We have no specific document that says identifying these private thoroughfares. And it should be, I guess, this is the place where it would start. At day one, when somebody's out there, um, so Joe Perspective homeowner comes in and developers building the first, first house right on the existing town road at that intersection, they don't know that they're buying into a private road. They get it, "Oh, there's bonds, there's this and that, that the road is gonna be developed." Well, like I said, Colonial Drive on Upper Maple Street, how many years has that been through your process? It is not a town road, has not been approved. I don't know when that's gonna happen. So this may shed some light, but I think you guys are the place where that should be. I don't know where you could put it in, in your rules, but it should be somewhere so that, uh, well, the example that I give you, my, my wife's folks, when they bought into Zodora Heights many years ago, they never understood that the road they bought into was not a town road until six years after they bought their house.
So that meant that the homeowners are then, uh, have to do the road maintenance costs?
Well, that too, but I mean, I don't know if the, well, the developer was doing, doing that, but I'm saying, you put a sign up, it's a private road, it's a flag. That, that's all I-
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll ask for a roll call.
Brian Card is absent with notice. Norm Farren?
Present.
Michael Huco?
Here.
John Seren Topolus?
Yeah.
Keith Thurlo is absent with notice. And Lorraine Lagard is absent at this point.
Unless she shows up, we have no- Yep, we have no, uh, seat, seating of alternates. Any addendums?
No addendums.
Citizen comments on items not listed in public hearing. Public comments can be emailed to publiccomments@killingleycct.gov or mailed to the Town Hall, 172 Main Street, Killingley, Connecticut, 06239. All pub, all public comments must be received prior to 2:00 PM of the day of the meeting. Public comments received will be posted on the town's website, www.killinglyct.gov. Any public comments on, items not on the agenda? Hi, hold on, no, doesn't look like it. One more time? Okay. Public hearings. Public hearings comments can be emailed at publichearings@killingleycct.gov or mailed to the Town of Killingley, 172 Main Street, Killingley, Connecticut, 06239. All public comments must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public comments, public hearing comments received will be posted on the town website, First one we have is zone change, text change application, 25-1354, Town of Killingley, PCC Commission, total rewrite of Section 570, Planned Residential Development, PRD, of the Town of Killingley zoning regulation. This is a continuance from June 16th, 2025. Okay. Okay. So what I'd like to do is, we got the comments from the last public hearing on, and we heard the comments on the four, that, you know, people against the four units per acre, and spoke against the, uh, removal of the public water and public service. So I'd like to give anybody who has any other comments on the rewrite to speak for us, and then we can go on to the other, to anybody else.
My name, John Lovell. I live at 57 Island Road, Daville, Connecticut. Thank you for holding this hearing, and thank you for all the hard work you have put into this. I'm an architect, and I've worked doing housing, commercial offices, city, rural, all over the country. I don't understand what you're doing. You have not presented an impact analysis to us that will tell us exactly what all of these words mean. I know what some of the words mean in a broad text, however, there's been no presentation on the impact. What is the impact of all these changes? Don't you have an architect you can hire that can show us what the impact would be, A, B, and C in different areas? You know, it's easy to imagine, looking at this section. Okay, well, you're allowing this, you're not allowing that, and it looks like an opening of, softening of regulations that allow more than we have in the past, or have now. I strongly urge you come back to this community with illustrations of impact, because I cannot imagine the impact on this, if I, a drawing, it needs to be, you know, anytime a presentation like this takes place, there should be an impact analysis, and a cost benefit analysis, and a community analysis into the impact of this rewrite, of which I still don't understand the reasons why. I'm not for it or against it. I don't understand it. I don't understand it. And I'd like to know how many of you on the board understand the impact of these regulations that you are about to put into place? I've lived in this community most of my life. Blueville was my place where I grew up. It was, people could ride their bicycles, we had a dog that paraded around town. Everybody knew him. So, um, my three minutes are just about up. I noticed that there's on the website, the Killingley website, there's letters where people are voicing their opinions. We, the people, own this community. We, the people, own this community. You need to understand what it is you're proposing. Maybe it's good, maybe it's not. Maybe it should be part of the town, but not all the town. But the way this reads, it covers a pretty large area of the town. Thank you for all your hard work, but please, please, give us an impact analysis. Thank you. Have a good day.
My name is Barbara Yater. I live right down the road, um, and I'm actually just gonna follow up on what he was saying.
Give, can you give your address, please?
Up 4 Norman D's Park in Daville. Um, so to follow up on what he was saying, the impact to what's gonna happen is our taxes are gonna go up, we're gonna be no longer a small community, you're gonna need to build another water waste management, because what we have is not gonna be sustainable for all those many more people that are gonna come from the cities, ruin our community. They're, you're not mentioning about having to hire new teachers for all of the new students that will be here. There's nothing explained. I don't understand how the last meeting, we'd already gotten to point D, when none of us even had a chance to vote on why the regulations were being changed. It's gonna ruin our community, our taxes are gonna go up, most of us are already living paycheck to paycheck because of very bad mismanagement in this town and in the state. And this is gonna bury us. It will destroy our community, we will no longer have a community here, we won't know our neighbors. Most of us, we went to school together, or our kids went to school together. Many of you probably have kids that went to school with our kids. It's very important to understand what you guys are doing to the community. I understand full well what's gonna happen, and it's not good.
Hi, Thomas Howard, 516 Chesnut Hill Road. I concur with what she's saying, um, the impacts that are possible. If I'm, if I'm misunderstanding this, probably because I don't understand it, you're talking about cramming small housings in a quarter, in an acre of land, and then possibly, if the town doesn't have the utilities available for sewer and water, that they'll have their own sewer and water. I don't know how that works. And what she said was that we're, we're like 19,500, if I'm not mistaken, per student what's being spent. And if you start allowing developers to buy 10, 20, 40 acres of land and shove all these houses, these whole, uh, housing development in there, students are gonna increase, you're gonna need more schooling, more teachers. Last year was the highest tax increase that I have seen since I've lived here, nineteen, since 1963. And it's gonna go, it's gonna go skyrocketing. There are problems, potential problems with what I'm saying about having private sewer and well. Groundwater contamination, maintenance, operation challenges, potential for poor design installation, difficulty ensuring proper water treatment, vulnerability to disruptions. Homeowners aware and cooperation, what needs to do. Nitrogen, uh, uh, frost ray pollution, cumulative impact, impact on sensitive areas. This is a rural community, and I've loved it since I've lived here. Rural, low population, open spaces, agriculture, natural landscapes, slower pace of living compared to urban and city areas. I have seen what has happened, and what potentially almost happened, with taking a good portion of Bell Park for another strip mall. We need, we need, we need stores, okay, but we don't have to over, overpopulate. There are eye stores in the community. Blueville Mill rubble, Acme Mill, East Killingley, downtown Daville Mill. What's happening with all those? They've been sitting for a long period of time. There's abandoned homes, there are homes that could be repurposed and flipped to make single family homes, like what happened in, uh, Attawagan. There are two homes down there that were horrible, uh, they, they redid them, beautiful. We, I, I know we need more housing, but I don't want to see cluster, because cluster is gonna be horrible for our community. That's, that's the way I see it. So I appreciate you listening to us, and I hope you do listen and act accordingly.
Yes, good evening. My name's Paul Kazaloskas. I live on 22 Bailey Hill Village, Anderson, Connecticut. I moved up there 32 years ago. Why? Because it was quiet. We had woods, we had streams, rivers, quiet people. I grew up in Monville, in a nice neighborhood, believe me, and houses were stacked, one by one, and you could actually, you know, hear your neighbor, okay? But that was a different time, that was back in the 60s. I saw my neighborhood, and I told the town, there's been one house that used to have beautiful, it was a beautiful house. People kept it up, now it's got trees growing taller than, you know, it looks like hell. And it really, you go down the street and it really makes the street, you know, it brings the value of people's houses down, but the town was, it's, it's, I know it's America, you could do whatever the hell you want to do, but it looks like heck. I try to keep my property up really nice. That's the way I got brought up anyways. But the more people you get in, especially these times, the crime rate in my neighborhood, I saw over the years, the last five years, has gone up. We just had a robbery down in Cranberry Bar. Broke into the guy's house with them sleeping at night. Smashed the window of the garage, stole thousands and thousands of dollars worth of ATVs that he works on and everything else. This is just right down the street from my house. Another robbery was across my street many years ago. Now, you bring in people from the city, they're not like us people. They're just not. That's why I don't live in the city. Okay? More power you do, this is America, I understand it. You can live where the hell you want to live. But I don't want some derelicts in my, my neighborhood. That's why we have a police force. When I moved here, we didn't have a police force. Now we have a police force. Why? Why do we have to hire a police force when we didn't have one when I moved here 32 years ago? And you keep adding officers. Why is that? You gotta answer those questions, too. And four houses, like, like the gentleman said, is that gonna be four separate wells on an acre? Do, do any of you people own acreage? Because if you do, I suggest you put three more houses on your acre and see how you like it. You buy your acreage, whether it be two, five, 10, 20, or 30 acres, because you want to live in peace. Okay? We don't need any more influx of people. If you want to build a house, fine, make it two acres for one house. That's simple. Woodstock does it. Pompett does it. So why don't we do it? Why have four houses on an acre? Where, where are you gonna get the acreage? Who are you gonna steal the land from? Eminem domain? To bring in more people? I know what the agenda is, believe me. I know where it comes from. It comes from up in Hartford. Well, that's too bad. I don't go to Hartford either. You know why? Because it's not safe. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Hi, thanks for letting us all speak this evening. I'm Cecilia Kent. I live at 416 Putnam Pike, and I've lived there for 15 years, but people in my family have lived there in their entire lives, in this town. So they've seen so many changes that have happened. Some of them have been done by this zone, ignored, but some have just happened over the years. I, my question is, and will you answer my questions if I have them, or is this just something that my input?
This is just comments.
All right, well, my main question to you all is why? Why are you doing this now? So, um, if that can be put on the website, the town website, I would love to know. And also, my other question, does this have anything to do with that 17-acre lot off of Blueville Road? That was, I was before you, five, seven years ago, to, um, argue about that development, and that never happened, I believe, because of water. So I'm just curious as to why you want to change the zoning now? And I really would love an answer to that question. So mine is kind of like, if you could please do an impact analysis and give us some answers as to why this is being put in place? And the town, though, is a lovely place to live. I travel to the other part of the state very frequently, at least once a week, and it is always such a pleasure to come back here. It is just a lovely, lovely area to live in, and I really hate to see that atmosphere change. So thank you.
Hi, Waylon Leonard, 280 Putnam Pike. Good evening, everyone. I've lived in Killingley since I was five years old. My family moved here from Stratford Bridgeport line to Snake Meadow Road in 1989, so that my parents could raise us up in the countryside. I remember shopping at the AMP, when it was where the library is now. I remember going to the library when it was still Bugbee Memorial. Growing up, we always ran around in the woods for hours on end, making forts, cutting trails. And I started attending QVCC here in town. I used to hike and organize dozens of litter pickups at Old Furnace, Ross's, the Res. I could go on, but my point here is that I love the rural character of this town, and I've always wanted to see that preserved. Needless to say, I live in a very different town than what I knew in 1989. In the last 35 years, we've added a new high school, new shopping plaza, many houses, and entirely new roads and cul-de-sacs. It's gotten much larger with much more traffic. The rural charm is slipping away, and I worry about what my son will have left of it to enjoy growing up here himself. Most towns from coast to coast are barely distinguishable from one another. We have a Lowe's or a Home Depot, Target or Walmart, a 99 or an Olive Garden. I myself am still bitter that we didn't get the Olive Garden. Recently, it was decided that we needed a Five Guys, Starbucks, and other national chains to break fresh ground on new building and parking lot. They almost carved out a chunk of our beautiful Owen Bell Park to do it. But citizens of- But citizens of this town showed up and pushed back. Still, we have seen empty storefronts and old buildings passed up by prospective developers and contractors for the easier, cheaper option of undeveloped land, further eroding our rural character. Now I'm driving around and I see these signs to maintain rural land in Killingley. But what are we asking for? It doesn't seem like a moratorium on development in town. Are we stopping the sprawling ranches that sit on a clear-cut 1 and 1/2 acres? Where houses are staggered in front of and in back of one another? I've seen that sort of build happen tons in this town in the last couple decades. Back in my high school days, I had some friends that lived in the apartment buildings over on Cranberry Bog. Now, I don't know for certain, but I would guess that eight to 12 families live in those two, two buildings. If anyone here has ever taken Cranberry Bog, I believe most would describe it as fairly rural, despite those apartment buildings. Now imagine if those eight to 12 families were each spread out on their own raised ranch with garages on an acre or two lots that have been largely cleared of trees. Would that approach to housing not disturb the rural character of Cranberry Bog? My wife and I bought in 2016, and we were lucky to do so. I see people paying rents in this area more than I pay on my mortgage. That isn't fair to young folks coming up now. They need to be able to live. And so unless we're going to somehow force these contractors to rehab the eye sores that everyone can see all around town, it only makes sense to make more smaller, affordable, efficient housing that contributes less to sprawl than what we've been doing for the last three decades with almost no pushback. It just seems odd to me that the RTC who put up all these signs wouldn't be able to figure out that putting up more housing in smaller spaces physically allows us to preserve more rural space. But I suppose that keep Killingley rural looks better on a sign that keep kids, more kids, out of our schools.
Kevin Godrow. My family's been here for over a century, well over. And thank you guys for doing what you do. It's an important job. And you get nothing for it, so thank you. This idea is pretty ridiculous, for sure. To say the least, I could stay up here all night, coming up for reasons. I'm not gonna. But I could assure you that everybody in this room will agree with what I'm about to say.
Dave Conoyer, 21 Mountain View Landing in Killingley. Soon to be 83, and I lived in this community for 80 of those years. Looking at this proposal, it's kind of like a mix of cluster housing, condos, what-ifs. With a grand dream, but there's a lot of refining. For example, the first gentleman with a lot more experience than, than I have is asking for an impact study. Absolutely, it's essential. In, in Georgia, in, in the greater Atlanta area, communities are developed around a commercial base. Why are we going in this direction for cluster housing? Why aren't we focusing our efforts on, on improving and trying to draw in an industrial park? It would make more sense tax-wise. And I ask, I ask everyone here, does the term "the last Green Valley" mean anything? You know, we are the last Green Valley. People come here. I have family that come from New Hampshire to come down and visit here because they like this area. We're sportsmen. It's better fishing, it's better hunting. It's, it's just a great place to be. Putting in this type of cluster housing, uh, and, and looking at this, again, it's, it's almost, almost like a, uh, like an HOA management with, with no management. So, uh, it, it's, it's a bag of worms to begin with. Uh, it, it needs a ton of refining. My, my, my recommendation is no, no way in hell. And again, let's, let's get a better tax base with, with some, some commercial development. We, we have a local wire company that was just sold. They're looking to build a new factory. A new factory. Internationally known wire company. What are we doing with that? Can anyone respond to that? I mean, you know, that, that's money out there for the taking. And again, this wasn't advertised, uh, at, at the meeting. This kind woman gave us the brochures. It's a first I ever saw of it. You know? I'd kind of feel like we got sandbagged coming in here without all this information that we could really digest and, and, and mull over and talk with our neighbors. Again, no, 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 no way in hell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jeanette Bodry, Coomer Hill Road. Can I ask you all a question? What's gonna happen if you put all that housing up there? This is my, this is my house. I have visitors every single day. That's the mother. That's the father. Okay? I've named them. This is Lucy. And this is Ethel. They come to visit me every single day. They make me so angry because they eat my baskets. They eat my hydrangeas. But you know what? I love to see them there. Because this is nature. This is where we are. We live in a beautiful area. Are we gonna have that? Where are they gonna go? You know, it's like, and I know someone said something about the young kids today. Okay? I was young. I was brought up, 15 children in my family, okay? We lived in a house and we made do with what we had, okay? Now, today, and, and please excuse me, because I'm not being prejudiced towards everyone, but the young kids of today, they don't know what it's like to put money away. You go to the Starbucks that we put up there, okay? And you're paying $8 for a coffee. And then you go to the one in, in Brooklyn and you pay probably another $8 for an iced tea. So let's add that up. On the average, the young kids are spending anywhere between $50 and $100 just to have their coffees every day. If you start saving that money instead of spending it in all these places, you could actually save yourself some money and have a house, if that's what you really want. I mean, think about it seriously. No one knows how to go without today. So we put on these strip malls so that you can go, instead of making yourself a coffee that costs you 10 cents, you're gonna go and spend all this kind of money. But yet, when it comes to this, oh, we want housing. Well, you know what? Remember the Waltons? How did they live? Grandparents, parents, and children, they all lived in the same house. And I'm not saying that that is something we need to do today. But I think we really need to stop to think about what we're gonna do with all our beautiful nature that we have in this town of Killingley and all around us. I mean, the bears are all over the place. You wonder why the bears are coming out? The bears are coming out because they have no place to live. They have no way to get any more food. Right? I mean, think about it. And I applaud you for all being on that board. I really do. And I know it's, it is a job. And people don't understand that it's a job. But the only thing I ask is when you decide whether you want a yes or a no on this, and I know some of the people there, that I really feel that everyone should vote either yes or no. I don't think in this situation you should be allowed to abstain. Because from what I understand, when the Zodores came up the last time, this situation, there were two people that abstained in the vote. I feel that you're there to make a decision for us, the taxpayer in the town of Killingley. And if you're there, then you should vote either yes or no, that you want this or you don't want this. I personally live on a 450-foot, off a 450-foot driveway. I love my privacy. I enjoy being there. I love nature. The birds, you hear the birds singing every morning. You can open up the windows. They're, they're, the, like I say, my deer are surrounded by, I don't feed them because I don't want to, but they seem to make themselves, you know, at home, at my home. And you know what? I'd rather have that than have tons and tons and tons of homes. And they're not even homes, they're actually cracker boxes to live in, really, you know? And I pay over $8,000 a year in taxes. So I have a good-sized home. And I am 68 years old, and I'm retired. And I do eBay on the side, so I can afford to live in my home. Because what I was left, as far as my husband's inheritance and, and his insurance, it just didn't, it just was not enough to survive. So that's what I do, so I can stay in my home that I love here in Killingley. So thank you very much. I appreciate all you do. And I sincerely hope that your answer is no to this situation. Thank you very much for listening.
My name is John Beck. I live at 6 Mockingbird Drive. Uh, thank you for, uh, giving us the chance to speak. I've lived here 19 years. My wife has lived here all her life. She's 65. And her father has lived here all his life, born and raised. I like it here because it's called the Quiet Corner, because it was quiet. It was much quieter than it is now. I think it's becoming less quiet. I've worked in Yonkers, New York, and Bronx, New York for 22 years. So I know what noise is like. Trust me. And my biggest happiness was when I came home from work, from the Bronx and from Yonkers, to Killingley because of the fact that it is quiet. And I hope it remains so. And I don't think this four houses on one acre is gonna be a very good idea because it's gonna be water issues, it's gonna be sewage issues. So, um, if this comes up to a vote, which I hope it does, I'm definitely gonna be voting no. And thank you for your time.
Ula Teak Barclay, 26 Dark Lantern Hill Road. I'm speaking here as a resident of Killingley. I'd like to go over some of the information that, um, most people in this room don't know. Um, planned residential development has been, um, in the regulations for planning and zoning since the 1980s sometime. But rural was not in there. Um, the regulations have been rewritten several times. I believe in the early 2000s, um, somehow nursing homes or, um, was inadvertently or left out of the regulations. So, um, 2016 or 2017, there was one petitioner. He is the owner and the developer of Westview Nursing Home. He wanted to build, um, the assisted living facility that's now on, um, 12 and 22, I believe. So, because it was on rural property. So instead of having that, um, low-density property changed to, um, I mean, rural property changed to low-density, he had planned residential development added to rural. And that's been in there since 2017. And even the commissioners didn't remember when it was added. Um, at the workshops, they, um, talked, um, talked about redoing some of the regulations. And instead of actually decreasing the number of homes for planned residential development in rural, they actually wanted to have five, um, homes per acre. There is a 10-acre minimum. But if you're looking at about one home per two acres, 10 acres would have been 50 homes. Now it would be 40 homes. The commissioner said that, um, it would never happen. Nobody would be coming to Killingley and building these planned residential developments, buying 100 acres and putting up 400 homes. If they're not gonna do this, why even have it in the regulations? So in the town of Killingley, the people are at the top of the, um, chain of command. Then it's the town council, and then it is the boards and commissions. So it's the people's decision of what they want Killingley to go to. In, um, the planned residential development, they have also added in there that, um, the commission does not have to follow the plan of conservation and development. The plan of conservation and development is written and rewritten every 10 years per the state of Connecticut. And in there, um, we have sewer avoidance areas. And the sewer avoidance areas are pretty much in the rural areas to keep those areas rural. Planned residential developments are used to ease rural communities into high-density suburbs. It only sounds good on paper. Today, it might be four, four houses per acre. Five years from now, the Planning and Zoning Commission can come and say, in rural, we want 10 houses per acre. So there's no limit. The, the zoning, um, regulations change constantly. So, um, there were, um, comments by commissioners that, um, the people don't come to the workshops. The people don't come to the planning and zoning meetings. They only show up when something's happening that they don't like. People were chastised for coming to last planning and zoning, um, to the public hearing. The people are here now, and most of the voices are saying that this is not what they want. So make your voices heard. Everybody get up here and make your voices heard. Because you're at the top of the list. This, um, community is supposed to be what you want. It is not supposed to be what the, the, um, town council wants. It's not supposed to be what planning and zoning wants. You are the ones in charge.
Ed Grandelski, Upper Maple Street. In addition to increasing the, the number of units per acre, the, um, proposal before us now regarding utilities, um, deletes sewer and water, which is ridiculous if you're having increased development. Also, it, if you look at the, the proposal or the, what's in, what's in place now, and that's approved August 21, 2017, page 7 of 10 requires municipal sewer and public water. Further, a letter from WPCA and Public Water Company stating adequacy of design and ability of the utility to service development. Additionally, page 6 of 10 specifies each structure shall be within 200 feet of a fire hydrant. Who took this out? We're screwing our first responders. So where's the water supply for all of this? You know, at least we should say, you, you, we have to go now five mile, you know, out in the outlaying areas, out in Blueville or maybe, uh, what, I don't know what you're doing in these Killingley, but if you can put a dry hydrant in a river or something, that should be part of this proposal. There's nothing in here regarding large systems, fire ponds, or whatever else. So we're delete, we're making it easier for developers to come in here and actually screwing us as taxpayers, so the first responders have to work a lot harder. Another issue to have, uh, building separation. No one looked at that in, in the, no one's talking about that. Page 8 of 12 in the 25 document, and page 6 of 10 of the, um, 17 document talks about minimum separating distances between buildings of 30 feet. But there's also language in there that says the fire marshal and the building inspector can bring these buildings closer together if they have fire retardant materials. Again, we should take that out of there. We should say 30 feet, minimum separating distance, with no exceptions, to give our first responders half a chance. Then there's another section, um, in the special permit section that was approved in the, um, June 16th meeting on page 5 of 8 talks about adequate public utilities and services. The proposed use or activity shall provide ready, accessible for fire apparatus, rescue, and police protection. shall provide ready, accessible for fire apparatus, rescue, and police protection. Be laid out and engineered to further the provision of emergency services. So where is the safety of firefighters being taken into account when building separation is minimal? And, you know, we're dumbing this down, we're making it easier for other developers. If you look at five seventy-point-five Required Findings, Road and Utility Networks, page two of twelve. Plan Residential Design incorporates measures to shorten road networks and utility networks. Wonderful. It's a, I got it in here. What a tongue-in-cheek statement. If a development established in our outlying rural development areas, such as Ledge Road, Tucker-Dishrick Road, Roth Road, a dirt road, Yosemite Valley Road, a dirt road, this is actually going to increase cost to the town to upgrade, widen, pave the roads, and upgrade and pave our outlying narrow roads. It will also require upgrades to the electric utility grid to the outlying areas, and require the installation of new cable internet service where nothing now exists. So there's language in this document that really is not in our benefit. If, page eight of twelve, public transportation. In the event regular public transportation is available to residents of a development, a shelter shall be provided. Well, if we're putting this kind of development in, regular transportation should be required. But are you going to get NCOG to put bus service out in that area? I doubt it. There was an article in the Norwich Bulletin on June twentieth, and it was regarding a US government tax force on communities, and it says, communities should be near jobs and roads and amenities, and including general utilities and services. So we're taking the general utilities and service out of the equation, and to put more intense development. Again, four units per acre on septic system and wells and outlying rural development is not a good policy. I mean, way out in the rural development. Separation between well and septic is a concern. However, what about the additional separating distances required for water softeners? I don't know how many people have a water softener in their house and you're on a septic system. Well, you better not dump that water softener in your septic system, because it's going to ruin it. So you need a mini, additional mini-septic system to handle that sort of thing. The same thing if you have a sump pump. There's a separating distance between your drain and your septic system. But that doesn't come into play until when your building is built. When the health department goes out and determines areas are suitable for well and septic, they don't take these other areas into account. Recently, there was a lot up on Zadora Heights that had to go before the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, because the lot was too small to cover all of this stuff. So they had to jungle, move things around so much to make it happen. So I don't know, this is not, this document needs a lot of work. I mean, even the existing document that's out there right now, you know, if there's, if there's community water and, you know, community sewer, that might be one thing. But if you're trying to throw this out there in way out in Never Never Land, then they can build on any parcel. You can't just limit it to a particular parcel. Any rural development parcel, this applies to. So we've got to look at that. Thank you.
Good evening, Emily Merkel, one thirty-one Slater Hill Road. At the June sixteenth meeting, two comments stuck out to me. One was made by the commission that this was not up for a vote, only that our opinions would somehow matter to you. And secondly, what was brought up at the end of the meeting was that there's usually only a handful of people at the planning and zoning meetings. So let this turnout serve as a clear and powerful message. The community is paying attention, and the residents of Killingley do not support these changes. The Planning and Zoning Commission exists to serve the people of Killingley, and right now, your town is all here, speaking adamantly and passionately, asking you not to approve these changes. No one here wants this.
Hi, my name's Mary Kalenzik, I live at one oh nine River Street. I recently moved there from two ninety-four Broad Street, and I lived right on Davis Park. Three years ago, I got a dog, and I walked my dog in that park every day, three times. And I would sit and talk to homeless people, and have conversations with them, and ask them their story. Eighty percent of these homeless people are from this community. People are suffering, they can't afford rents, they can't afford houses. A two-bedroom ranch-style house goes for three hundred thousand dollars now. A modest three-bedroom ranch goes for half a million dollars. I honestly don't care, because I rent. I choose to rent. I understand everybody's concerns, but the community of Killingley needs to do something to help house people. And no, they're not going to come from Hartford and hurt you. I'm from Hartford, I've lived here for eleven years. People from Hartford don't want to come here. Why did I come here? I came here for a job. And I don't want to talk to you, because I've had it with you before. I came here for a job.
Please, let's, it's not between you two, you can take it outside if you want it. It's comments here.
All I'm saying is, I have no opinion. I came here because of the stupid signs everywhere, I wanted to know what was going on. I was told this had to do with some stupid rule on the books, that you could build four houses on one acre, which is obviously stupid. That's just stupid. Get rid of that rule. But this community does need housing. It needs housing. So I understand people want rural, it's beautiful, it's beautiful here. But this community needs housing for your own, for your children, for your children. You need housing here. Thank you.
Gordon Merkel, one thirty-one Slater Hill Road. I spoke before, so I don't want to add to what I spoke to before, and there was a lot of good speakers here. I just wanted to add a couple of things I didn't hear mentioned here. Deep bought a property up on Baileyhead Road, I don't know if you're aware of it, it was an open space. So the fact that they bought a huge lot of ponds and woods out there was to have open space. I don't want you to turn around and then put high-density right next to it, and you're just going to have a city next to a park, and it's not low-density anymore. So that was one thing. And the other thing that I didn't hear brought up, that Governor Lamont actually vetoed one of the bills that potentially would have given the city of Hartford control over our zoning. So now it's back in our hands. So as you spoke before, it's in our control that we need to be proactive with this. And again, as I spoke before, there's all those properties that could be renovated and made into housing. That lady spoke about before, so we brought that up before, about developing stuff that's not developed. There's so much open, broken buildings, the mills. I've been here for twenty-five years, and I still feel like an out-of-towner, so. I do appreciate, I was at the VFW, and I've had people that have forty-year fights amongst themselves, they've been doing it longer than I've been alive, and they've lived here way longer than I've been alive. So I appreciate what they like it here, it's rural. So again, I'm still a no on that, and I appreciate what you do up here. Thank you.
Michelle Murphy, three twenty-five Breakneck Hill Road. I'm here once again, I've been taking this mic for a year. Ula's been taking the mic for a year, Ed Grandelski's been taking the mic for a year. And what we've tried to tell you guys is that the town doesn't want four dwelling units per acre in rural. We were asked, where are your people, which is a legitimate question, and we got a petition in one weekend of a hundred and fifty signatures, two weekends, I think, which you have on file. We have thirty-eight more, just from red, white, and blue. I'd like to see a show of hands. If you don't want four dwelling units per acre in rural, will you raise your hand? Here are my people. Okay, so legitimate question, legitimate question to ask where they are. Over the past year, I've struggled, was, am I crazy? Do people want this? And I go out and I talk again, and it's the same thing everywhere I go. There are small, you know, maybe one developer or one guy, you know, does that. We still want growth. Whoever is a builder or a construction worker, we still want normal growth in normal areas, you know, one house per eighty thousand square feet in rural. We want low-density development in low-density areas. But this is such an obvious no. I really hope that you guys listen, because I've been coming here for a year, trying to tell you that this is what I'm hearing. And let's see what else I got here. Oh, you know, there's questions about the technology, can it be done, can it not be done? I've been in the wastewater industry for eighteen years. I was chief operator at Brockton for ten years. I am the plant manager at Maynard. You know, Brockton was fifteen million gallons a day, Maynard is one point four five million gallons. When I talk to my colleagues in Massachusetts, the technology is there to do this, forty houses on ten acres. Now, maybe it's not up to scale in Connecticut yet, maybe it's thirty-five houses, maybe it's thirty houses, you know, per ten acres in rural. Nobody wants it. Nobody wants it. So I hope that you guys can hear us. Thank you, thank you for all you do. It's been a painful process. I'm sorry if I lost my temper at any time. It's been a growing experience for me as well. It's a painful process to watch the town work these things out, but, you know, I just truly, truly believe, I just don't see it, they just don't want it.
Hi, Jody Clunt, twenty Colonial Drive. I don't have a lot to say that other people haven't already said, and I think the fact that everybody has said so much, you know, really speaks volumes to how people feel. One thing I did want to mention that I haven't heard brought up, when people have talked about the strain on our services, is our medical community. I go to my doctor now, it sometimes takes me weeks or maybe months to get an appointment, and when I get one, it is booked in my portal as any twenty minutes. And I'm literally in there for twenty minutes, and I get kicked out of the room, and I've asked my doctor why it's so hard to get an appointment. And she told me that it's because a lot of doctors in this area are retiring, and the new doctors that are coming in don't want to be GPs, they want to be specialists. So we have a shortage of doctors. So when you bring even more people into the area, we have, you know, people in our community that need medical attention, they're going to find it increasingly difficult to get. So that's one more strain on resources that we don't have. But one other thing I wanted to mention, last year, the zoning commission approved a development right next to my house on Colonial Drive. And I know that's not because of this that we're bringing up now, but the reason I mention it is because we are on a cul-de-sac that has three homes on it, and now the new development that got approved would add thirty-two more homes next door to my house on a parcel that's just under seven acres. I know how devastated everybody on my street was when that was approved, and I just want to add my voice as a no to this, because I don't want my friends, my neighbors, the people sitting in this room, to feel that same devastation that the people on my street felt when that got approved. Because I know how heartbreaking that was, and I just, I don't want people in this room to go through that. Everybody who has something like this come in near their house will be heartbroken. And I just, I don't want that for my friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Stephen Gray, I live at nine thirty-eight North Main Street, Danielson. I'm a truck driver, I'm a diabetic, and I see taxes go up every single year. And not for nothing, then our sewer taxes go up. Sewer tax went up too. So my wife is sick, I'm sick, my son's got slight case of autism. I work every day. It's getting harder and harder to live in this country, this state. Been here fifteen years. I vote no. And not for nothing, we should take care of our vets first.
Hi, my name's Russ Goulet, I live on Quinns Hill Road with my wife Lois. Comments, this is my first meeting I've attended, we've been here five years. The reason why we're here is we're both retired, we're getting up there, and we've always liked the rural type of living, which we didn't have while we're raising our children elsewhere. We were looking in Maine and New Hampshire for nice rural communities, and liked the space and the quiet, and, you know, just the absolute beauty of nature. So my wife happened to find the last green valley, the quiet corner. We checked it out, we loved it. We bought an existing home, and then built a new home. And we love it here. And that's the reason why we're here, because we're retired here, and we just love this lifestyle, and just drive it around, it's absolutely gorgeous here. I got to admit that we are pretty ill-informed about this whole deal that's going down, and we're not one to hit the website and, you know, find out what's going on in the town and all that. So we don't even get a newspaper. It goes with our lifestyle, that's the reason why we chose to live here. So we're pretty ill-informed of what's going on, admitted that. And I found out a lot just from hearing this crowd tonight. And being in other towns and attending town meetings, it was town hall style, where it was questions and answers, and I understand that we'd be here till, you know, next Thursday if we did that. But I'm hoping that the questions raised here tonight will be answered once everyone has their chance to speak. My questions are similar to some people that already asked them, is why are we even doing this? Is it a financial thing for the town to gain more tax dollars, tax revenue, from the increase of, instead of X amount of dollars taxed collected on a couple of acres of land, now there could be many homes there, many units, condos, whatever, each paying thousands, five thousands, it could be exponential income. Is that the reason? I'm also hearing rumors that it's some kind of state funding or federal funding, that we don't meet certain criteria or quotas in this area. Is that true? I don't know. Rumors, like I said, are ill-informed. I'm hoping that these questions will get answered here tonight, and that's pretty much why we're here, is to get information, not so much to provide our, what's the rejection to what, you know, rejection to what's going on. And just one last comment about, we didn't find out about this until we received something, a postcard in the mail for when the first meeting was, and we received it the day of the meeting, like picked up our mail at five o'clock, the thing was at seven. So we were like perturbed about that, but, and it wasn't even from the town. So such a great matter and decision-making for a town, and not even a mailer to the residents or something, hey, there's going to be a meeting about this, we're going to do, maybe it's because the town people don't have a say in yea or nay on it. Maybe it's just the zoning people won't get to decide and answer the, I don't know. So I'm looking to hear that tonight. And yeah, so we're not for it, obviously. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Karina Torrey, three twenty-five Cranberry Bog Road. I'm probably not going to say anything that hasn't been said already. Like most of you, I moved here six- Um, like most of you, I moved here 16 years ago, um, to a gorgeous piece of property in the middle of the woods, because I'm not really suitable for neighbors, nor are my kids. But, uh, other than that, um, just because the regulations can be changed, doesn't mean they should be. I serve on the wetlands commission, and we are put up against it constantly. The regulations and rules get met, there's nothing else we can do at that point. So seriously consider whether it is a good thing to change them. Thank you.
My name is Risa Cook. I live on Coomer Hill Road. I've been there for 34 years. When we moved there, we didn't have Jeanette as a neighbor. We had nobody. It was just us. And then there was a horse fund down the street. Now there's many houses. And that's okay, because it's still rural. But on our road now, we have four large properties that are for sale. And I mean large properties, just like I'm Cranberry Bog. And the problem is, is that we have a lot of wildlife. I have bears, I have deer. I have everything in my yard, and I have no issues with it. What's going to happen is, I don't like, which you, you guys have examples on here. How did you get your examples? Do you already have contractors that are ready to buy up the property and stop building? I just, I mean, I don't understand. You're staying in one of your papers that you have underground utilities. What's going to happen up in Coomer Hill, Cranberry Bog, you're going to have underground utilities? What's going to happen with our wells? We don't want city water. We want our wells. We want our septic. We don't want this. Do you know what I mean? And what I don't, I appreciate you guys' position, what you're holding, but who gave you the right to make the decision for us? It's us. We're the taxpayers. We're paying for this. I don't want this. And I'm sure none of these people want it either. Those people came to retire here. I've been here. We're already up there too. I don't want this. This is a no-go for me. So I wish you would put it to a vote, because I say no.
I'm Wayne Twoliger. I live on Chestnut Hill Road. And I'd like to take you back to 1963 and 1964. Some of you may not be of age to remember that, but Boise Cascade came into town, and they bought up over 634 acres of land, which now the state has purchased. When they built those lakes, they weren't there. They were man-made lakes. They were going to put a, a, a house on a third of an acre of land for $39.95, $4,000. And then you're going to have a house that was built by Boise Cascade with their carpenters, their lumber, and everything else that went with it. And you had a choice of seven houses that, that you could have built. Then the state came in and went, "Oh, wait a minute. We've got a problem with that. You're going to have sewage draining into these lakes." Even if you're not on the lake site, putting 1,500 house lots on this amount of land at the time was going to cause problems then. They had that figured out in 1965. They told them, "You've got two choices. Build your own sewage treatment plant or tie into Danielson, seven miles away." And Boise Cascade just folded the project and sold it in a heartbeat, because they knew what was coming. We know what's coming now. Don't change our rural town. Don't change anything else like that. 1965, they had knowledge of it. It should be knowledge even now. Thank you.
Scott Heap, 63 South Street, Dayville. Um, this whole thing reeks to me of what is called incrementalism. Anyone here follow the World Economic Forum? Okay? You will own nothing. You'll be happy. You're going to eat the bugs. Okay? 15-minute cities? Am I saying everything that people have heard before? You know how it works? Incrementalism. Okay? You have a big goal, you start pushing it a little bit at a time towards the goal. That's what we're doing here today. So no, we're saying no to this. We don't want it. So, hope the board acts appropriately. Thank you.
My name's Michaela. I live at 1553 North Road. I grew up here in Killingley. I have a lot of friends who are still in the area as well. I'm thankful enough to live in my grandparents' house that they built back in the 60s for $25,000. It is not something that is even achievable today. I'm telling you, I still live in this town because it is rural, and I want it to stay that way. I feel like doing this is pushing people out. I have a lot of people my age, people I went to school with here, who are moving to surrounding towns like Sterling, Hampton, places that are smaller than here, because it's already getting too crowded. And they don't want cluster housing. They want to be in big open land and raise families that way. So I'd appreciate it if you guys took that into consideration too. It's not just an older generation. It is a younger generation that wants this as well. We do not want cluster housing. It is not anything that I want to live in. If that comes to this town, then you're pushing us out. I would have to leave as well. I don't want that. So thank you for listening.
Any more comments?
Can I just ask one more question? You have on 101, that rundown mill that's all fallen down, you've got a fence around it. You guys complained about the house that was on Maple Street, and it got torn down. You've got everything in Blueville. You've got the end of Bailey Hill Road, that big, and they've got the house that was never used. If you guys want to build something and you want low-income housing, which would be great for a lot of people, how about tear them down and turn around and do something with them? You've got ample property, you'll have ample parking places, and you won't interfere with everybody else's property. I mean, it is. It's an eyesore. You tore the house down on Maple Street. You made a big stink about that until it got torn down. Well, everybody else has got fences around this other. Do something with that. Utilize it. It's an eyesore.
One last time? Any more comments? Yeah? We don't bite.
My house, the day after the meeting.
Sorry about that.
I, that has nothing to do with us, sir.
Well, whoever it is, I call the town hall, because I'm saying, "What's your name?" And so you pull it. How I find out?
Sorry, but...
If I don't have to, you do. I don't, I don't, I don't... I don't have to. 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 I don't have to.[1321.08] days. And so that's the timing of it. Whether they decide tonight or not, I don't know, but that's what the statute says.
So within those sixty-five days, if they decide that they want to go ahead with this in the town, is there any way the people in the town can appeal their decision?
I represent the town, not individuals within the town. I can tell you that there are, if people have standing to make appeals, there is a statutory procedure for taking appeals of Planning and Zoning Commission decisions to the Superior Court.
If they decide they want to go ahead with this in the town and destroy the town, then the people who have rights will be able to.
This is getting, our dialogue is getting out of order, Mr. Chair, I apologize. But certainly you can seek legal advice, but people who have standing, and not everybody necessarily would in this kind of an application, but they've still got work to do before anyone can be concerned about that.
And then, if they have sixty-five days, they must answer?
No, they have sixty-five, they could, they have other business on tonight, they could table this tonight and deliberate at the next meeting, they can table it a couple of times. They just need to make a decision within sixty-five days of tonight, so.
Where can we find out what is in the meeting?
Sit around until after this other application, and then we'll do.
You've got sixty-five days, you certainly don't have.
No, no, I got another application that's in front of us. We're going to discuss that, and then we get into unfinished business. And then we'll discuss that.
May I?
Yeah, we'll discuss it to see what we're going to do.
So you're going to decide tonight whether you look forward or just wait?
If that's what the commission wishes.
So it's not the wish of the people, it's the wish of the commission?
Yes. We decide what the regulation says.
What your future's going to be of the town?
Pardon?
So if people can decide what our future's going to be in this town?
We decide what the regulations are going to be.
That it's our fate, and if this is the town, and if these are the taxpayers, that pays for everything?
Wait, you know, if you would sit till we get to the unfinished business, you know, I think you'll clear it up. I just got another application I have to discuss first.
This isn't a public comment.
Public comments are closed now.
Okay, but I just want to say that they'll do what they want, you have to go out, but how can we vote? And everyone wants to go, but if they want, they want to do it, and not only that.
No, okay.
Mr. Chair, my suggestion, the hearing's closed, you should move on to the next time.
Okay, next application, zone map change, application thirty, twenty-five dash three fifty-five, Mr. Leroy, three, Westcott Avenue LLC, landowner, eight seventy-seven North Main Street, GIS map one fifty-four, lot six, approximately three point eight acres, medium density, and a portion of eight eight nine North Main Street, Royal Realty Trust landowner, GIS map one fifty-four, lot seven, medium density area, to change eight eight seven North Main Street and a portion of eight eight nine North Main Street from medium density to general commercial. Jonathan, you got that on the map? Mr. Leroy?
Yes, how you doing? My name's Guillaume Leroy. I'm just here hopefully looking for a zone change. It seems to make sense, if you look at the map up on the screen, all the red around it is all commercial, is owned. The property's been struggling for a very long time, if you, if anyone's familiar with the property, it's the one that's got all the debris outside the front of it, it looks like there's a yard sale every day with junk for sale. We're looking to hopefully clean the place up and get it up and running, and get a commercial place up in there. I think it makes the best fit for the area that it's in, and it would do the best as that.
It's funny because it's, because if they're not to see that, and they're completely done, yes, it is, right across from where my house is.
Yeah, it's on North Main, near the movie theater, the, um, the what?
End line.
Yeah, the old drive-in, yeah, the old drive-in, Mike's Transmission. Yeah, it's all, it's all, it's all commercial on the left side of the street. Yeah, it's over near the drive-in, the drive-ins.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interrupt. This has got to get recorded for the purposes of a record, and there's conversations that are going on, and it's going to be very, very hard if they're ever willing to do that. So, there will be a moment, no problem, and just suggested that make sure just one speaker speaks at a time. Thank you.
That's all I have to say, actually, so.
Any, anybody got any public comments?
Is there a commercial property building that you'd like to develop? Is there something specific?
Hi, my name is Mary Jane LeBlanc, and I live on eight seventy-eight North Main Street, which is right across the street. Granted, I know that he probably wants to develop a business there, which is fine. Right next door, there's a hairdressing business, across the street, my house, I have a hairdressing business. I've been in my home fifty years, and my hairdressing is fifty years old, so I was kind of like grandfathered in. If I knew what he wanted, it would be a different story. But I mean, they could put anything there. Right now, they are cleaning out, but it's still a garbage mess. They have so much stuff that they should take to the dump to clean it up, before they even try to change the zoning. Because I don't want something that's going to hurt my family or my property across the street. Thank you for hearing me.
Any other public comments?
Am I allowed to speak again, real quick? So just like the gentleman was saying earlier today, he was saying about taking like some of these mill buildings that are rundown and struggling, and getting them up and running again, and getting proper usage out of them. That's all we're literally trying to do with this property. Like the lady said, it's an eyesore, I'm not going to deny that at all. We just currently acquired this property and have been going through the steps to do the right thing to get the property up and running. Although we have taken three dumped dumpster loads of debris out of this property, that goes to show you how much was in this property, that there's still that much there. The whole house was full, you know, so we emptied the whole building out. This is what we do for a living. I like to make poor-looking properties like this, and get them up and running again and useful, and not making them eyesores for the community, like this lady right here living across the street. I'm sure she's been sick of seeing the property look like that for years, you know? And we will do our damnedest to make sure that it's cleaned up as soon as possible, too.
But if they change it to general, what if it's a beginning? Then anything could go.
Get to the mic.
It wouldn't be just a housing project, it would be more of a business. So would you join me to accept?
Well, yeah, we're trying to match what's in the area for business, yes. We're not going to do, like the gentleman asked, we're not a hundred percent sure, but I own a construction company, it could be a kitchen cabinet store.
You should go to the mic, ma'am.
I didn't hear.
Or anybody could buy it from you for a business?
I'm going to actually develop it. We're going to, I'm going to do the development.
And what business did you say I could do?
I said it's potentially, it could be, I own, honestly, I do antiques for a living, I own a construction company, it could be an office, it could be a place where I've been wanting to do kitchen, kitchens out of, selling the idea of, you know, come here to our office, you want a new kitchen, come sit down and talk with us. There's a few different options that we have for the property, but we're definitely not going to develop it into residential or anything like that.
Well, as long as I knew that it was a clean business, not a smokehouse, or a vapor, I'm sorry, but that's how I feel, that I would feel still safe at my house. I've never had to worry about anything. The Hoopers lived there for many years, and after their sons died, then granted, yes, it was a mess. And I've seen you clean it up, but I still see a lot of mess there that should be taken to the dump. You're cleaning out the house, I understand that, but it still looks like a mess, and it doesn't give us pride of our house when we have something like that across the street from us. I thank you for being honest with me.
No problem, and I thank you too for your time. And just to assure you, that I promise that whatever I do there, you will feel safe. I promise that. I promise.
Any more, any more public comments?
Commissioners have any comments or questions? Norm?
It looks like the tail end of this property is, goes into a residential area.
So, are you speaking about the back portion there, I believe?
Yeah, into the.
Into the yellow.
There's like a four-acre unusable parcel of wetlands back there. Yeah, so that's, and I've actually been trying to research who owns that, just to see if it can help create a buffer for me, so no one else can do anything with it, too. It'd be used as a buffer if it was potentially able to be acquired. But it's all wetlands right there.
Okay.
John?
You got to get, you got to get to the mic.
Hi, excuse me, sir. Is any of the part that you are wanting to change, is that going into where the building, where the oil company is?
No.
Is that going towards the back?
I'm sorry, explain what you're asking, though?
Okay, if I'm looking at your house to the right of it, where you have the sign, is it going back?
Yeah, my property, the property that I have goes back and then towards that, kind of like at an angle, straight back. Mine's the one with the writing in it.
Okay, so it goes in back of the beauty parlor?
Yeah, it goes behind, I believe, Roy's.
Yeah.
And then it goes, the Fox place, and then it goes behind, not Roy's, L.P. Noonan.
Okay.
The Delta Bulk place.
Yeah, the transmission place?
Yeah, the Delta Bulk place, the one with all the gas tanks.
Right, because the Hoop has had all that property.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm behind, my property spreads out behind both of those two properties.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John, any?
The only thing I will add is that we are aware of the load, of the momitorium with the water and everything like that, so anything that we're going to be doing there is going to be obviously to work with that, too. We have a very good understanding of what's going on with that, so.
Would there be any chance you'd bring heavy equipment into this area? Because I'm just concerned that you're pretty close to residential area there. Are you firing up bulldozers, or backhoes, or anything like that?
No, to be honest with you, if you notice, the property's relatively pretty clear and clean as it is. It's mostly just cleaning out this house and cleaning up the property. There's a literal fence from, pretty much from me to right there is the fence surrounding the house where all the trash debris is, so that's pretty much what we're looking to do. At best, maybe we take down a tree or two, just to clear the backside of the property up a little bit, you know, at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We have no more comments? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? So be it. Unfinished business, text, zone text change application twenty-five thirteen fifty-four, it's the Town of Kinley Planning and Zoning Commission, total rewrite of section five seventy, plan residential development, P I D, of the Town of Kinley zoning regulation. What I recommend to the board is to continue this for, we've heard many comments of, nobody's in favor of what we wrote. So we got to work on rewriting a lot of it, or taking stuff out. So I think, seeing we only got three up here, and three members couldn't make it tonight, I like, I was, would like to postpone this, or continue this to next month, so we can work on rewriting it and updating it to the people's wishes, of removing the stuff they don't like, and updating the stuff that they think should be updated. But that, one commissioner's opinion, it's up to the board now.
Excuse me, sir? Will we have some sort of notification about those changes by the meeting?
We won't be able to make those changes until the meeting.
But can we at least see what they're proposing?
We won't meet again till the next month, so we won't discuss this till the, till next month. So you would have to come back to the meeting to see what, what the whole board, not just half of the board, agrees on the changes. If we vote on it now, and it, and we shoot it down, we go back to the old regulations that's in process right now, and the old regulations, I hate to tell you, has four, four units per acre. So you're going back what people don't want. So that's my recommendation, is that we work on it, the board work on it, and it might take, you know, more than just this one month, oh, next month, I'm sorry, to update it all. I forgot how many pages it is, but then we can get it right, and then we can vote on it at the next meeting, if we, you know, update it right. If we take out the four units, or whatever, you know, whatever the board wishes, you know, I got my opinions, and I'll express them that, you know, in a month, but.
Mr. Chair, you suggesting calling for a motion just to continue this matter on?
Yes.
Maybe one of your members will make the motion.
I make a motion to table it till next month's meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, that meeting will be Monday, August eighteenth of 2025.
And I'm going to make a comment of why I'm suggesting that. We can't rewrite anything until we act on what is before us this evening, and the full board should be there to act on it, and then if it's defeated, then we, we go in a different direction, according to what, you know, we've heard and think we should do. That's it, you know, okay. This is an open discussion at this point.
Now, will it be here? I have no idea. Hang on a minute. Ma'am, will it be here?
Do we have to vote on it? No.
It, that would be up to the board. We have to ask the school if the auditorium is available. Otherwise, our standard meeting place is the town meeting room in Town Hall on the second floor. It will be posted, it will be, it will be posted on the website, on Facebook. You can call into the office if you want to keep anything updated, it's eight six zero seven seven nine five three one one. So I can try to look to see if the auditorium will be open, but I'm not sure, I can't tell you at this time. So our standard meeting place is the town meeting room at Town Hall.
We'll be looking for a larger venue. So if it's not here, it might be somewhere else, but it will be posted as part of the agenda. Our agenda typically goes up the week prior, the Friday before the meeting, which is the third Monday of each month. We can look to have it on the little message board. I know not everyone has internet, we heard that tonight, but it will also be, we'll look to update with the Town of Kinley government Facebook page, as well as the Town of Kinley's website.
Are you going to be looking to propose something else? Are you going to let people have their input again, or is it just going to be?
The public, the public hearing has closed, so public comment. Our secretary's taken notes. We understand, we have recordings of this, we know what people are thinking, what people want, so it has been well documented.
We'd encourage any of you, just for record, if any of you have questions of staff after the meeting, feel free to come up and approach either Ann Marie or myself, and we'd be happy to answer any and all your questions.
So we got a motion on the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Postponing it till next month? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? So we'll discuss it next month when we get the full board here. Zone map change application twenty-five thirteen fifty-five, Mr. Leroy, three, Woodstock Avenue, landowner, eight seventy-seven North Main Street, GIS map one fifty-four, lot six, approximately three point eight acres, medium density, and a portion of eight eight nine North Main Street of Royal Realty Trust landowner, GIS map one fifty-four, lot seven, medium density area, to change eight eight seven North Main Street and portion of eight eight nine North Main Street from medium density to general commercial.
I'll make the motion.
To change that? And the effective date?
Yeah. The eighteenth, yeah.
Of August?
Would be effective date.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is there a second? Yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? So be it. So now, new business, special permit application twenty-three thirteen fourteen, amendment to site plan for pion sign only, C P D Kinley LLC, now landowner and applicant, five fifty Hoffert Pike, GIS map one fourteen lot forty-one, approximately one point eight seven acres, Village Commercial, requesting an amendment to the site plan for the sign only. Received and agreed, reference to, if agreed, reference to staff, so.
I'll make a motion to reference it to staff.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? So be it. Oops, and I just lost everything. What do we got next? Adoption of minutes, workshop minutes of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and regular meeting of Monday, June sixteen, twenty twenty-five.
The workshop meeting was canceled, so there's no minutes, it's just the regular meeting.
Pardon?
We did not have a workshop.
Oh.
So the only minutes we have are the regular meeting minutes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept, if they're good?
As usual, I have a couple very minor typos that I noticed. Just Sterling is spelt wrong on page seven of thirteen, the second paragraph, third line down at the end, Kinley Sterling and Plainfield, just to change that to Sterling, that's it. And there was one more. Page ten of thirteen, the paragraph that starts, it's like five, or three down, Mr. Card stated, okay, near the end of that paragraph, it says, towards the middle, Mr. Card stated that he has concern about it going to the stormwater. I think that should be concerns, about it going to the stormwater. So if you agree, probably just change that to concerns. Yep, and that's it. Other than that, it looks good.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
The motion has to include those.
Oh, with those changes?
Yeah, with those changes. To accept, okay?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from Monday, June sixteenth, which would include two minor typo corrections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? I was staying because I wasn't at the meeting. Correspondent, it's the zoning practice on the correspondence, department reports, zoning enforcement officer and the zoning board of appeals. And no Jonathan?
There's nothing to report.
Nothing? Nothing on the inland wetland? Guess not.
Nothing to report.
All right. Development director, report?
Hello. The Economic Development Commission doesn't meet again until the first week in September, but we can announce that ninety-five Main Street, there will be a grand opening for Bark Society on July twenty-fourth at four P M. You also can adopt a dog at that time if you wish to do so. And then. And then Jersey Mike's located at 550 Hartford Pike will be doing their grand opening on July 30th at 12:00 p.m. The Blueville Mill Site, 244 Blueville Mill Road, is currently undergoing EPA remediation. EPA will be on the site Monday through Thursday and we will be posting on the town website any questions you may have. There'll be contact numbers, they are asking the public to stay off the site while they do their remediation efforts. They anticipate it'll take about two to three months. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Town council, what is on?
From the town council, we had several appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Norm was made a regular member of the planning and zoning. Congratulations, Norm. From the acting town manager's report, Buddy, there was a local traffic authority attended a road safety assessment workshop and the workshop was held in a local town with two road issues. One of them was the same as Kinley and it has to do with the backup of traffic during pickup and drop-off. There was a collective bargaining elections for the police and armed security officers. It was held on June 17th. Both votes were unanimous for a union. The East Coast Greenway Trail, the Town of Putnam, has conditional approval from, for design and new recreational trail from Deep, and Deep has earmarked the old trial bed for the location of the trail. Hurricane severe weather on June 1st started of the hurricane season and Deep held an online meeting about upcoming, about the upcoming season. Connecticut land use recording fees went up as of July 1st. The Connecticut Interagency PFAS Task Force is conducting sampling of private wells around fire training centers for PFAS. And if they do find some PFAS, the area also goes into the Quinabog River, which if they do find any, then they'll, they'll do some sampling from the river. And the Connecticut DOT is developing plans to replace speed limit signs on local rural roads throughout Connecticut. And as currently, each municipality will be responsible for the upheaval of the signs. And that's it.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?